So prayers? Please stand.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Good morning. Almighty God, from whom all wisdom and power are derived, we beseech thee so to direct and prosper the deliberations of the Parliament, now a symbol that all things may be ordered upon the best and surest foundations for the glory of thy name and for the safety, honour and welfare of the people of these islands. Bless our sovereign King Charles III, William, Prince of Wales, and all the royal family. Give grace to all who exercise authority in our Commonwealth that peace and happiness, truth and justice, religion and piety may be established among us. Especially we pray for the governor of our islands, the premier, the speaker of Parliament, the leader of the opposition, ministers of the cabinet, ex-official members, members of the Parliament, the chief justice and members of the judiciary that we may be enabled faithfully to perform the responsible duties of our high office. All this we ask for thy great name's sake. Let us say the Lord's Prayer together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power and the glory, forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless us and keep us. The Lord make his face shine upon us and be gracious unto us. The Lord lift up the light of his countenance upon us and give us peace now and always. Amen.
Please be seated.
Nomination and election of the Honourable Speaker of the Parliament.
Thank you. I now call for elections for the Speaker of the... for the election of the Speaker of Parliament. Nominations are now open.
Madam Clark, I rise to nominate my colleague, the Member for Red Bay, the Honourable Sir Alden McLaughlin.
Thank you. Nominations have been put forward by the Honourable Leader of the Opposition. Is there a seconder to the nomination?
Madam Speaker, it is my distinct honour and indeed pleasure to second this nomination.
Thank you. The nominations has been moved and seconded. Does the elected Member for Red Bay accept the nomination?
Madam Speaker, sorry. Madam Clark, I am honoured to accept the nomination.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other nominations? There are any other nominations?
Madam Clark, I'd like to move a motion that nominations be closed at this time.
The... there's a nomination... sorry. There's a motion for the nominations to be closed. Is there a seconder to that?
Seconded. Seconded.
Honourable elected Member for West Bay... West. Thank you. The question now is that the nomination process be closed. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, no. Ayes have it. Nominations are now closed. As there were only one nominee to the election of Speaker, I now declare that the Honourable Sir Alden McLaughlin, elected Member for Red Bay, is the Speaker of the Parliament of the Cayman Islands.
Motion to invite Her Excellency the Governor, Mrs Jane Owen, to administer the oath of due execution of office to the Honourable Speaker to be moved by the Honourable Premier, Minister of Finance and Economic Development, Education and District Administration and Lands.
Thank you. I rise to move the motion to invite her Excellency the Governor, Mrs Jean Owen, to administer the oath of due execution of office to the Honourable Speaker. to administer the oath of due execution of office to the Honourable Speaker.
The question is that the Honourable House invites her Excellency the Governor, Miss Jean Owen, to administer the oath of due execution of office to the Honourable Speaker. All those in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say no. Thank you. The ayes have it.
I, Sir Alden McNeem McLaughlin, do swear that I will well and truly serve His Majesty King Charles III, his heirs and successors, and the people of the Cayman Islands in the office of Speaker of Parliament of the Cayman Islands. So help me God.
Sir Alden, I know that everybody in Parliament here today and indeed a great many people beyond these walls around the country will want to join me in offering you our congratulations and our support as you become our new Speaker. In a few moments, Sir Alden will assume the mantle of the Speaker's robes and with that, sir, the responsibility to oversee and guide this House, which is the representation of the highest form of democracy we have here in our beloved Cayman Islands. And so, sir, on behalf of His Majesty, King Charles III, I wish you Godspeed and wisdom over the coming weeks and months as you carry out this really important role for us all. Congratulations, sir.
We'll give the Honourable Speaker a few minutes to robe and return to start official start house. Everybody can remain in your seats, please.
Good morning. Please be seated. Parliament is resumed. I want to start with the few words I have to say this morning by first thanking Her Excellency for her well wishes as I undertake this next step or stage in my political life. I also want to thank Premier O'Connor Connolly, my leader, Honourable Roy MacTaggart, my colleagues in the opposition, all of you here in the House as Members and Ministers who have reposed your trust in me to become yet the third Speaker of this Parliament in this term. This term, my sixth as an elected Member, has seen an unprecedented level of political turmoil, with Members changing sides and positions so many times that an observer would be forgiven for believing that Parliament has been engaged in a high stakes game of musical chairs. Well, the music has stopped again. And we now have a new Premier, a new, uh, new ministers, repackaged ministers, a rebranded government, and in me, a new Speaker. My fervent prayer and that I believe of most of the people of this country is that that music will not be heard again until the next general elections, which are constitutionally due by May twenty twenty five. Colleagues, it is time for a reset, to try again to give the country mature and stable government. In the last general elections, voters tried a thing, as we say in Cayman, an elected and unprecedented number of independents. And those independents themselves tried a thing. And behold, the birth of PACT. Alas, PACT was short-lived and the government has now been rebranded as the UPM, the United People's Movement. I am certain that the inclusion of United in the new name is no accident. And indeed, we must all pray for unity of purpose within this repackaged administration. Indeed, I believe the fate of Cayman and our people hinges on having a government in which all Members are pulling in the same direction. Democracy is a messy business, not just in Cayman, all over the world. And it does not always deliver the result that voters thought they had voted for. And that is increasingly the case as not only the rise of independents, but the rise of small parties which force coalition governments all over the world. Yesterday was another example. The Netherlands have no less than twenty-six parties. So how long do we believe it will take for a government to emerge from the results of that election? Sir Winston Churchill, who in my opinion is the greatest Prime Minister that ever was anywhere in the world, put it this way. Many forms of government have been tried and will be tried in this world of sin and woe. No one pretends that democracy is perfect or all wise. Indeed, it has been said that democracy is the worst form of government, except for all the others, forms that have been tried from time to time. There are still many in this country that believe that party politics is a bad thing. But whether you call it a group, a team, a movement or a party, to govern effectively requires a set of people who have coalesced around a broad set of principles and policies and agree collectively to pursue them. That is the only way a government can be held to account by voters. Voting for an individual who is not associated with a team that has articulated its position on a wide range of issues affecting the country, really is like buying a number. You might win and get what you want, but most of the time, you lose your money. I urge the Members of Government to put behind you the events of the past two and a half years and work assiduously and cohesively to achieve as many of the goals you have set you have set before the next election cycle rolls around. And for those who are first timers here, I should tell you, you have one year before the silly season begins in earnest. I want to say a few things about the role of Speaker and my decision to accept the position. The role of Speaker in the Westminster system of government is almost as old as Parliament itself, dating back to thirteen seventy-seven, when Sir Thomas Hungerford was appointed. It was in those early times, the role of Speaker, a perilous one, because the Speaker was the unfortunate one who spoke to the King or Queen on behalf of Parliament. And often this involved delivering bad news to the monarch. And being the messenger of bad news had its consequences. No less than seven Speakers were executed by beheading between thirteen ninety-four and fifteen thirty-five. Ends I believe arose to saying, don't shoot the messenger. But in those days, they beheaded you. Thankfully, the role of Speaker today is not fraught with quite so much danger. But it is still a very responsible and important office. I am honoured to become only the ninth Speaker of this Parliament and its predecessor, the Legislative Assembly. The role of Speaker as I see it is to preside at meetings of the Parliament, order the business of Parliament, chair the Parliament Management Council, ensure that the rights and privileges of all Members are preserved, protect the interests of the minority in the House, keep order and ensure that proper parliamentary process is followed. I wish to make something absolutely clear. The Speaker belongs to the Parliament. The Speaker's allegiance is to the Parliament. The Speaker's role requires him or her to be objective and unbiased in presiding in Parliament. I commend the Honourable Premier for having the confidence and courage to ask me, a founding Member of the progressives, a former leader of the progressives, member of the progressives, a former leader of the progressives, and the current chairman of that beloved party, to sit as speaker. But I am certain that she has done so because she knows me and knows that I am deeply conscious of the importance of preserving both the independence and integrity of the office. I promise you, I will conduct the affairs of this High Office without fear or favour and without regard to political affiliation. So to my colleagues in the Opposition and my fellow members and supporters of the progressives, I assure you, I have not left the party. I have simply assumed the independent role of speaker for the same reason I entered politics more than twenty-three years ago, for love of country. My first loyalty has always been and always will be for my country and my beloved people. And to you, Premier, and your government, you have my faithful assurance that I will do all I can to facilitate your legislative programme and to help you get done the important business of the country which needs to be conducted here. Finally, I say, there may be people in this country that loves it and its people as much as I do, but I warrant you, none love it more. I am Caymanian first and everything after that. Madam Premier, members of the Government, and my colleagues in the Opposition, again, I thank you all for your confidence in me.
Administration of Oaths or Affirmations, Oaths of Allegiance and Due Execution of Office by Mr. Strand-Boddin, the acting honourable Deputy Governor, responsible for the portfolio of the civil service, to be the temporary ex-official member of Parliament.
I, Strand Ashton-Boddin, do swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III, his heirs and successors, according to law, to help me God. I, Strand Ashton-Boddin, do swear that I will well and truly serve His Majesty, King Charles III, his heirs and successors, and the people of the Cayman Islands in the office of ex-official member of Parliament, to help me God.
Mr. Warden, it is my pleasure to welcome you to this House as the acting ex-official member in the place of the Deputy Governor.
Presentation of Papers and of Reports. Development and Planning Act 2021 Revision. Development and Planning Amendment Regulations 2023 to be laid on the table by the Honourable Minister of Planning, Agriculture, Housing, Infrastructure, Transport and Development.
The Honourable Minister of Planning.
Mr. Speaker, I beg to lay on this table of this Honourable House the Development and Planning Act 2021 Revision, Development and Planning Amendment Regulations 2023.
So ordered. Does the Honourable Member wish to speak thereto?
Mr. Speaker, I will speak to it later on and throughout the motion.
Very well.
Government Business Bills. First Readings. Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read for a first time and is set down for second reading.
Banks and Trust Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Companies Management Amendment Bill, Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Foundation Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Insurance Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Limited Liability Companies Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Limited Liability Partnership Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Mutual Funds Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Virtual Asset Service Providers Amendment Number Two Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
National Pensions Amendment Bill 2023.
The bill is deemed to have been read a first time and is set down for second reading.
Second Readings. Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023.
The Honourable Deputy Premier. To move the second reading.
Good morning, Mr. Speaker. It's a pleasure to welcome you in that position. Good morning, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I beg to move the second reading of a bill entitled Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023.
Does the Honourable Deputy Premier wish to speak thereto?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise to present the bill on behalf of the Government. It's a bill that provides for the consolidation and enhancement of the beneficial ownership legislative framework into a single act and provides for incidental and connected purposes such as addressing evolving global standards. Mr. Speaker, before I present the specifics of the bill, I wish to provide some background which is relevant to this bill, as well as the nine consequential amendment bills which I will present during the meeting today. Mr. Speaker, as you are aware, the Cayman Islands has been collecting beneficial ownership information for over two decades. However, over the last seven or eight years, matters have become voluminous. Following an exchange of notes agreement entered into with the United Kingdom on the sharing of beneficial ownership information in 2016, legislation was introduced in 2017 requiring companies to provide beneficial ownership information to the registrar of companies, which altered the Companies Act. These requirements were subsequently extended to limited liability companies and more recently to limited liability partnerships and other business vehicle legislation in their respective principal acts. Mr. Speaker, as you also are painfully aware, the Cayman Islands must also take account of EU measures. And since the beneficial ownership legislation has been introduced since 2017, the EU's Fifth Anti-Money Laundering Directive was published, which also calls for increased transparency around beneficial ownership information, which has to also be factored in. Additionally, Mr. Speaker, the Caribbean Financial Action Task Force, so-called CFATF, conducted a mutual evaluation of the Cayman Islands in March 2019, which was finalised, when finalised, gave a partially compliant rating for the transparency of beneficial ownership information. Their reasons for this rating included challenges in verifying the information provided and a lack of adequate and effective sanctions for non-compliance. Furthermore, Mr. Speaker, in March 2022, the FATF strengthened its standards relating to beneficial ownership information of legal persons. These revisions included an expansion of the types of entities the standards apply to, additional data points such as nationality, the mechanism of control of the beneficial owner, are all now required. Also, Mr. Speaker, the changes to the FATF standards require the provision of improved access to the beneficial ownership information by competent authorities, financial institutions, and designated non-financial businesses and professions. Mr. Speaker, the revisions to the FATF standards that are required to implement into legislation have to have a demonstrable track record of effectiveness, which includes to get ahead of the fifth round of the FATF mutual evaluation review, which will commence for all countries in 2025, and we anticipate that the Cayman Islands assessment in that fifth round will be around about 2026. When taken together, Mr. Speaker, the Cayman Islands in the last few years went from just having a set of easily-found so-called "know your customer" rules to beneficial ownership rules that are scattered throughout the statute book into the various principal acts of business entity legislation. Mr. Speaker, this requires streamlining those rules from those acts into a single act, which will include the Companies Act, the Limited Liability Companies Act, the Limited Liability Partnership Act. There will also be consequential amendments for our regulatory laws, the Mutual Funds Act, the Insurance Act, the Companies Management Act, the Banks and Trust Companies Act, the Virtual Assets Act, and the Foundation Companies Act. Mr. Speaker, the background, however, doesn't stop there. There is another aspect around beneficial ownership information emanating from the UK that we have to cover. As you are also very familiar, in October of 2019, the Cayman Islands made a commitment to introducing public registers of beneficial ownership information when it became a global standard, and I'll refer to that commitment from this point forward as the 2019 commitment, which anticipated doing so by the 31st of December this year. The 2019 commitment was made in response to evolving standards, chiefly that the United Kingdom had produced a draft overseas territories publicly accessible registers of beneficial ownership information of companies order 2020, drafted but not enacted, but nonetheless a draft order prepared under the hand of the then-UK Secretary of State to comply with the requirement under section 51 of the UK's Sanctions and Anti-Money Laundering Act 2018. The 2019 commitment at the time, Mr. Speaker, also demonstrated our country's commitment to international standards and our responsiveness to adapting our frameworks accordingly. However, on the 22nd of November last year, the European Court of Justice issued a judgment, in essence declaring that public access to beneficial ownership information in Luxembourg and other EU member states was a disproportionate interference with the rights guaranteed under the Charter of Fundamental Rights. I'll refer to that judgment, Mr. Speaker, from here forward as the ECJ judgment. Following the ECJ judgment, Mr. Speaker, the Ministry sought expert legal and constitutional advice on public registers and had to engage with the UK's Foreign Commonwealth and Development Office in view of the 2019 commitment. Mr. Speaker, it was concluded by our technical team and our external Constitutional Council that the ECJ judgment constitutes a material change in circumstance since the Cayman Islands made the 2019 commitment, and that the implementation of a register of beneficial interests accessible to the general public by the end of 2023 is not only not feasible, importantly, it's not constitutionally sound. As a result, Mr. Speaker, acting on the advice of Constitutional Council, the bill contains a clause at 22.6, a specific provision to permit the Cabinet to make regulations to provide constitutionally permissible public access because the ECJ judgment outlines a limited window in which public access may not be a disproportionate interference with privacy rights, certain parties who may meet a legitimate interest test, in broad terms, those persons who have a genuine need to seek information so as to prevent or combat money laundering or terrorist financing, a requestor, for example, who shows that they're involved in an investigation into money laundering and terrorist financing. But, Mr. Speaker, crucially, creating such regulations under clause 22.6, should the bill be passed, will have to be subject to an affirmative resolution in this House, which means that the relevant provisions will be ring-fenced and cannot commence until affirmed by a resolution of this Parliament, which means that there will be ample time for a public consultation, not only with industry, but the general public, to take on board feedback and their views on any such regulations. Therefore, Mr. Speaker, we can grapple with that final point next year. For now, let us, Mr. Speaker, focus on what actually is the global standard as promulgated by the FATF and making our beneficial ownership legislation more streamlined and efficient and ahead of their standards coming in in 2025, which does not include general public access. And so, Mr. Speaker, taking all that background together, the bill will proactively assist the Cayman Islands in preparation for the fifth round of a FATF evaluation process, as I mentioned before, to commence globally in 2025, with Cayman estimated to fall in 2026, consolidate the beneficial ownership legislative framework into a single user-friendly beneficial ownership act, thereby streamlining processes, procedures, to ease the administrative burden on government agencies and industry participants alike, take a step to address the 2019 commitment as far as constitutionally permissible for the time being, and demonstrate that the Cayman Islands once again is a leading financial services centre of excellence in complying with evolving international standards. In the interest of time, Mr. Speaker, I'd hope that the, I wish, I beg, that the hands ards reflect that background summary that I have just taken you through to serve as the background to the nine consequential bills on the order paper today. Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in thirty-four clauses and seven Mr. Speaker, the bill is arranged in thirty-four clauses and seven parts, arranged broadly as follows. Part one of the bill contains clauses one to five, which sets out the title of the bill, allows for the commencement by order made by Cabinet, and definitions of key words and terms used throughout the bill, including legal person, beneficial owner, and competent authority. Part two of the bill contains clauses six to twelve and provides for the duties imposed on the registrable beneficial owner, legal person, and the corporate services provider to identify registrable beneficial owners. Part three, Mr. Speaker, of the bill contains clauses thirteen to seventeen and provides for the establishment and maintenance of the beneficial ownership register, which is to be maintained as adequate, accurate, and current. Part four of the bill, Mr. Speaker, contains clauses eighteen to twenty-one, which set out the process that takes place to issue notices and restriction notices where the legal person has failed to provide information to the corporate service provider and sets out what effects the notices have. Part five of the bill, Mr. Speaker, contains clauses twenty-two and twenty-three, which provides the competent authority may provide access to beneficial ownership information to a number of entities, including the Royal Cayman Islands Police Service, the Financial Reporting Authority, the Cayman Islands Monetary Authority, and the Tax Information Authority. The competent authority is empowered to charge such fees as may be prescribed, including for administering access to information on the search platform. Part six of the bill contains clauses twenty-four to twenty-seven, Mr. Speaker, which set out the powers the competent authority and the registrar have to request information, as well as the enforcement framework consisting of administrative fines and criminal penalties. Part seven of the bill, Mr. Speaker, contains clauses twenty-eight to thirty-four and provides for the general matters in the legislation, such as the competent authority's powers to issue guidance, the registrar's power to make rules, the cabinet to make regulations and orders. This part also sets out the savings and transitional provisions. To conclude the presentation on the bill, Mr. Speaker, I would like to thank the ever-hardworking staff in the Ministry who grapple with these issues day to day with vigor, intelligence, and with prudence. Legislative drafting that also helps to translate that policy into statutory language, especially the assigned Legislative Council in this case, Ms. Maureen Benjamin, for her efforts with respect to the design and preparation of the bill. I would also like to convey heartfelt thanks to the industry, who by and large saw the vision and overall aims of the bill. Mr. Speaker, the bill was consulted upon widely. In addition to cross-government agency consultation, there were five rounds of consultation with industry members that have taken place. This includes a public consultation as far back as September 2021 for six weeks, two sets of engagement with industry-focused groups in February 2020, and two industry consultations on this bill commencing in October 2022 and then again in March 2023. In addition to consultation, ministry officials have presented the bill, held question-and-answer sessions at least six industry events, including with the Cayman Islands Directors Association, the Alternative Investment Management Association, the Cayman Islands Compliance Association, and a host of others. I personally checked in with Cayman Finance this week to ensure that there were no material objections that were raised other than small clarifications were received during the twenty-eight-day consultation period, Mr. Speaker, and which I'll have to put forward a small set of committee-stage amendments later today, which we filed with you, hopefully accepted with your leave. I'd also like to thank the Leader of the Opposition and the Member for Abbotan Town West. I shared a copy of the bill prior to it being published, gave them my verbal summary of the bill, its vision, its aims, the importance to get ahead of standards and to be behind them and to scramble before the next assessment to try to push through legislation in a hurried fashion, which puts pressure, as you know, Mr. Speaker, on the government agencies, puts pressure on the private sector to adjust in a timeframe, puts pressure on clients to be able to modify their fares accordingly. With that, Mr. Speaker, I therefore commend and also thank all of those in not just Cabinet but caucus for also understanding that this is a bill that sets out a new vision for the Cayman Islands to be a step ahead, to not have to grapple with these issues on the back foot and capitalize on the success that we all share in being removed from the FATF gray list. And I dare say I would not like to see any other minister in that position again. With that, Mr. Speaker, I therefore commend the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 to this Honorable House for its second read.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister. Does any other member wish to speak? Does any other member wish to speak? Honorable Leader of the Opposition, may I just say one thing about process or procedure here, which has always irked me since I've been around. Standing orders say that a member who wishes to speak shall stand in his or her place so they can be recognized, rather than the speaker having to look around to see which light is on. Honorable Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I'm delighted to welcome you here this morning in your new role. Before I address the... grateful for the opportunity too to make some brief statements with regard to the transparency bill, but I crave your indulgence, sir. Would like to say a few words in recognition of what took place here this morning, if you wouldn't help me, sir.
Just this once.
Just this once. So, Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the Opposition and the Progressives family, I congratulate you on being elected a Speaker of this honorable Parliament this morning. You know, I think it's a very significant achievement in your impressive twenty-three years. As an elected member of Parliament, I liken your dedication to our people, to our islands, and this honorable House. Your commitment to our country has been unwavering, sir, throughout your time here, especially as a leader of the Opposition or as our former premier. I believe that same commitment will be seen in your new role as Speaker. Over the years, I have noticed a sign that sits on your desk that reads, "Neither Seek Nor Shun the Fight." I'm confident these words will guide you in your new role, symbolizing your unwavering dedication to integrity and fairness in leadership from the chair. Your vast experience, sir, and fair-handed approach will steer positive discussions and help encourage unity amongst all members of this Parliament. Your leadership as Speaker will undoubtedly be vital in shaping beneficial decisions for our country. Though we on the opposition benches are saddened that we are losing a giant political figure, your transition from the opposition to the speakership will, I know, greatly benefit our country and this Parliament. And so I would close, Mr. Speaker, by wishing you much success in your role, and I congratulate you again this morning, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leader of the Opposition, for your kind compliments, even though they're a bit of an exaggeration.
Thank you, sir. I refrain from riffing on me. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm grateful for the opportunity to make these few comments on the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill that's now before this House. Mr. Speaker, I recall, and I know you will as well, you know, this is something that's been around since 2019 when we made the... during our term, we made the commitment that we would implement beneficial ownership provisions to allow public access to our company's information system, but only when it becomes a global standard. And I think we have maintained that stature and that position to this day. And even though we have a bill before us, this is not coming into effect immediately. It will be some time, I think, before it can be brought into effect because I know from speaking with the Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services that there is still much work to be done. And what is here in this legislation isn't the same as what was being asked of us, I think, from the outset with regard to, you know, what was coming, the pressure we were coming under from other sources within EU's OECD or the FATF, I can't remember which alphabet group it is, but they were pressing for full access to... you know, anyone to have full access to our corporate information. And that's not what this will do. Mr. Speaker, where we are today with regard to this bill positions us, I think, quite well in terms of our preparatory work for the next mutual round of evaluations that the Minister referred to that commence in 2025. And I would hope that as we progress and move forward to that point in time, that we would have similar occasions like that to deal with issues that we know are going to be extremely important, that we need to comply with before we actually get to it. We've been digging ourselves out of the back foot for many years. We've been behind the curve. And where we are today now, we are at the top, and this, I think, puts us ahead of the curve. And I would hope that we can always remain that way. We are a huge jurisdiction in the financial services world. We are well-respected, and we are leaders. Let's resolve in government and in this Parliament that we always remain that way and try our best to make sure we don't find ourselves on the back foot again with this. So I'm, on behalf of the official opposition, I say we wholeheartedly support the legislation that's before us today, and we will all vote in favor of it. I'm going to leave it there, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the opportunity to say these few words with regard to this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Leader. Does any other... The Minister for Tourism and Transport.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I would ask your indulgence to allow me to say a few words of congratulations before I give my contribution in respect to the bill before us, if you give way. Let's limit them. Thank you very much. Let's limit them to a few. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I want to first say congratulations to you, Honorable Sir Alan McLaughlin, in your new role. I recall when the notion of you being selected as a Speaker was being discussed amongst myself and government members. And naturally, my political instinct chipped in and thought about, what does that mean in the bigger picture of things? But the core part of being a Caymanian came to the forefront, which was the role of the Speaker and the balance of democracy in this House. And I can't say that I could find any better person for the role, not because there are not capable people in this honorable House. Matter of fact, man, Mr. Speaker, we just had an amazing new young individual who was making strides in this honorable House. But I believe, Mr. Speaker, that your tenure here in this House, your constitutional guidance to our country over the last two decades could only bring but positives to this honorable House of democracy for the good people of the Cayman Islands. So I would like to congratulate you in that role. Mr. Speaker, I would also want to take this opportunity to congratulate the Honorable Premier publicly and the Honorable Deputy Premier and all my colleagues in the United People's Movement. We have some new ministers and new spots, some ministers back in Cabinet, and some members who have made some significant sacrifice to ensure stability in the Cayman Islands Parliament. One, Mr. Speaker, that I think should be recognized and appreciated and congratulated. Mr. Speaker, I want to say that I have also listened keenly to your remarks earlier in respect to where we should be going over the next year and four months, and I couldn't agree with you more. I want to ensure the public that this group, newly-formed group, rebranded group, is committed to working together to ensure stability in our democracy. Regardless of the differences of policies on the government side and the opposition, we have committed to ourselves that we will present ourselves in the appropriate way to ensure stability. Mr. Speaker, in closing up this congratulatory and recognition section of my contribution, I want to take this opportunity to thank the former premier, Wayne Panton, for his two and a half years of leadership. He's a good man, and I appreciate working with him over the last two and a half years. Mr. Speaker, in respect to the bill before us, the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill, I want to say that the Honorable Minister responsible for financial services have worked very, very hard with the team in his ministry and the Attorney General's Office to get us to this point. One, Mr. Speaker, that many people have thought we were unable to do. And I take this opportunity to highlight that hard work and skill is exactly why he was chosen amongst the United People's Movement to be our deputy in respect to the next sixteen months. And, Mr. Speaker, I hope yourself and the opposition will be willing to join me in congratulating the Honorable Deputy Premier in his new position as he guides us, along with the Honorable Premier, for the rest of this term. Mr. Speaker, though I, like many Caymanians, may have been nervous about the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill, I can say on behalf of the good people of Georgetown Central that I am comforted by the guidance that has been given to us in caucus and in Cabinet by the Honorable Deputy Premier, that the fears and the worries of potential loss to our financial services industry, by the transition into transparency of our financial services industry. I'm comforted to know that the strategic steps of delaying the implementation, being first to the table in respect to the changing times in financial services, that we shall still continue to be one of the world leaders in respect to the financial services. So on behalf of the good people of Georgetown Central and the government of the day, I have given full support to the Honorable Deputy Premier on the bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Minister. Does any other member wish to speak? Honorable Attorney General.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and good morning. Mr. Speaker, I would like to join those who have spoken before. Mr. Speaker, I would like to join those who have spoken before in offering my congratulations to you and taking one more boxes. Thank you, sir. It is, of course, no surprise to us, given your passion for service and the contraband self. And so having listened to your observations this morning, I am more assured than ever, if I needed to be, that the speakership is in good hands. So congratulations. And congratulations to, of course, Honorable Premier, Honorable Deputy Premier, and our new minister, former speaker, as well as all those who have worked so hard over the last couple of days, Mr. Speaker, to allow the business of governance to continue. And, Mr. Speaker, just allow me to, a little bit tangential, but you observed earlier on that what is, that democracy is a messy business. And those who have been following events in more recent times would understand and appreciate that. And so sometimes these things happen and the country tend to get a little bit nervous, some people get a little bit anxious. But, Mr. Speaker, if you follow world events as you do and most of the people around you do, this is really democracy at work. And so while there are understandable concerns sometimes, the fact is that, like anything else, there's always a way. Mr. Speaker, I rise to provide my support to the Beneficial Ownership Bill, so ably moved by the Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister of Financial Services. As you heard, Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Deputy Premier mention, this is not a mere consolidation exercise. It is also meant to enhance the Cayman Islands Beneficial Ownership Framework. And in the context of the Cayman Islands, Mr. Speaker, this is understandable. It is understandable because corporate transparency is of paramount importance to us as a jurisdiction, given the nature of the business that we do here, Mr. Speaker. As the FATF reminds us, corporate vehicles such as companies, trusts, foundations, partnerships, et cetera, conduct a wide variety of commercial and entrepreneurial activity. But again, Mr. Speaker, as has been recognized by the FATF, despite the essential and legitimate role that these corporate vehicles, corporate vehicles play in the global economy, their unique legal status also, Mr. Speaker, lends them to be used in complex schemes that are designed to conceal the true beneficial owners. And in many respects, Mr. Speaker, the real reason for conducting transactions using these entities. These vehicles, Mr. Speaker, can be used for various illicit purposes. Mr. Speaker, for undesirable persons engaged in circumvention of money laundering rules, the corporate entities provide an attractive way to disguise their identity and, as I said, to conceal the origin and often the destination of the proceeds. And hence, certainly need to have appropriate mechanisms in place that can identify beneficial owners and to be able to verify the information provided and to be able to also monitor activities that are being undertaken using these corporate vehicles. So, Speaker, it's also important now to enable the jurisdiction to be able to cooperate with law enforcement agencies and competent authorities where it is established that these entities are being used for illicit activity. You heard, Honorable Member, mention, Mr. Speaker, and you know very well about the exchange of note that was entered into in order to facilitate the provision of information where it can be demonstrated that illicit activities are being conducted by corporate entities. And of course, Mr. Speaker, it's important in all of this to take into account the constitutional rights to privacy, including client confidentiality, Mr. Speaker. So it is not just a carte blanche sort of cooperation framework. It has to be within the acceptable safeguards of legitimate constitutional rights and client confidentiality. Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Deputy Premier mentioned about the judgment from the European Court of Justice and the concerns raised there and the need to cast, where possible, our framework with an eye on what was observed in that judgment. Because, Mr. Speaker, it is recognized that the European Convention on Human Rights is part of our legislative frameworks, sorry, our legal framework. We have a Bill of Rights that is largely fashioned on the European Convention on Human Rights. And we would be careless, reckless, Mr. Speaker, if we were to craft legislation in a way that do not take into account the protections guaranteed by our constitution and, of course, supplemented by the European Convention on Human Rights. And so this is a work in progress. The Cayman Islands, as you heard the minister said, has been consulting far and wide, and sensibly so, taking expert legal advice on these matters thus to ensure, Mr. Speaker, that whatever construct we end up with is one that is fit for purpose, is one that is recognized by all as being able to withstand legal scrutiny, Mr. Speaker. Otherwise, this would be an exercise in futility. So we need to continue to work, Mr. Speaker, to address the concerns highlighted by the Court of Justice in its judgment whilst, at the same time, Mr. Speaker, holding fast to give an effect to the 2019 commitment that was provided. Mr. Speaker, this is a very important initiative for the Cayman Islands, especially given our preparation for the fifth round mutual evaluation, which is due to start in 2026. But of course, we can't wait until 2026. We, as I speak, Mr. Speaker, we have started a preparation in earnest because there is a lot of ground to be covered. Issues such as beneficial ownership will come under increased scrutiny so to matters such as virtual assets and so on. And so we have to be extremely proactive, Mr. Speaker, in ensuring that the preparation is in full gear by the time we get around to 2026, when we get our technical compliance questionnaire. The Cayman Islands has always shown, have always, well, as a jurisdiction, has always shown leadership in these areas, Mr. Speaker. And sometimes we feel, as I mentioned before, that we are review fatigue, if I might say that again. But another way to look at it is that it is an ongoing review and ultimate validation of the legitimacy of our framework, Mr. Speaker. Each time we come up against these headwinds, these challenges, these reviews, we emerge with flying colors and ultimate confirmation by the international standard setters, the FATF, European Commission, OECD. We always come away with the requisite confirmation that whatever we are involved with here as a jurisdiction in terms of cross-border businesses and others are matters that can withstand scrutiny, they are legitimate book of business. And, Mr. Speaker, it then leads to confidence in those who seek to do business through and from this jurisdiction. And so it really adheres to our benefit and assists in our reputation as an international financial services center, Mr. Speaker. I want to end, Mr. Speaker, by publicly again thanking all of those who have been involved over the many years in guiding this jurisdiction, those from the private and public sector, who have been involved, Mr. Speaker, in guiding this jurisdiction through these initiatives. We have been incredibly fortunate to have excellent individuals voting in the public and the private sector and who have demonstrated the necessary will, the necessary commitment, Mr. Speaker, the passion to assist in ensuring that our jurisdiction remain a credible one in the eyes of those who seek to do business here and for the international standard-setting bodies, Mr. Speaker. I want to thank them. Unfortunately, I cannot say that we are at the end of the road, that there is still more work to be done, still many more miles to be covered and so. But, Mr. Speaker, I am confident that we have the necessary commitment and the necessary will to continue to do what is necessary and to prepare for any future auditing that will take place, Mr. Speaker. And so I join the Honorable Minister, the Honorable Deputy Premier in commending the Beneficial Ownership Bill to all honorable members of this parliament, Mr. Speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Attorney General. Does any other member wish to speak? The member from Waddington West.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And I guess I'll have to go back to the, Mr. Speaker, line I haven't used to Madam Speaker for so long. Mr. Speaker, before I add my two cents, I too want to congratulate you on your new role. Last week, one of the feedbacks I got during my contribution to the debate was that I kind of thank you too much, so I think for the record, my views or my position of what I think of you has already been documented enough. I just want to say congratulations to you. And also I want to congratulate the new UPM led by Honourable Juliana Connolly. I can say that I honestly can sleep a little bit better at night. I think her heart is in the right place, and I think she has assembled a great team. And I am optimistic for the future of this country. And it's something I actually feel good about. So I want to honestly congratulate the new premier and also the new deputy premier. He did reach out to me, Mr. Speaker, concerning these discussions with the bill. And for the record, I think it's important for the public to understand that, one, we're getting to the heart of the financial services industry. This is the bread and butter of the Cayman Islands. This is not something to play politics with, and this is something that we need to make sure that when we do send a message, we do know that people internationally are looking at what we say and do in this parliament. And we need to make sure that when we do send a message, that we send a message that is clear and everyone understands the Cayman Islands' commitment to being a responsible player in the global financial industry. So with that said, Mr. Speaker, I too congratulate the minister and also for the hard work that he has done in terms of getting us off the gray list and everything else. I mean, we do recognize the challenges that we do have within the financial services industry. And like many other people, they are concerned about, I guess, the balancing privacy with it. The only concern that I have primarily, Mr. Speaker, is actually the last page of the bill where it basically speaks about countries or territories that have entered into agreements with the government for the sharing of beneficial ownership information. And the only country listed there, Mr. Speaker, is the United Kingdom. And why that jumped out to me, Mr. Speaker, is that when we look at the Tax Information Act that we have, that bill itself is over 300 and something pages. And the bulk of that bill is actually made up, or the bulk of that act is actually made up of agreements that we have with other countries, over 30 that is actually listed inside that actual legislation. So I was just a bit curious, and hopefully the minister can touch on this when he wraps up, is that we look at the Tax Information Authority Act and see that we have several countries signed up, but in this one is only one country. And I want to know if it's a situation where it's only the UK that would require this information or this is something that we expect to add to other countries. And the reason why I bring it up, Mr. Speaker, is that you look at something as simple as a common reporting standards that has became almost like, to some extent, a global standard. But the one country where it is not valid or enacted is actually the United States. So it's a classic case of, you know, you have the privacy there for their citizens, but everyone else has to have something else. So I just wanted to make sure, as the Honorable Attorney General mentioned in his contribution, that we balance the privacy of people and the entities here in the Cayman Islands with regards to what else is out there. Because while we are focused on a lot of people evading taxes, we also can't forget that there are situations of identity theft, where people are out there basically stealing other people's information, getting everything else from people. And we need to make sure at a minimum that we have our citizens and our corporate entities here protected. But with that, Mr. Speaker, I congratulate the minister for the hard work he has done, the team that he has working for him, led by a good chief officer and a good team that goes, I've seen them work first hand, so it's not hearsay. And I just want to congratulate the minister for getting this far. But like I said, we just need to make sure at the end of the day, while we are finding, we're leading, we also finding the balancing of the privacy of our people. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Honorable Member from Waddington West, the member from Georgetown, not Georgetown, Bay West.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. And, Mr. Speaker, while I take a few minutes to congratulate your acts for the whole podium, because I can't promise you I can be as short as others. And I like the old podium because somebody said a good walking old thing is... No, that one, the other one over there, sorry. Mr. Speaker, I won't take much time to say congratulations because I listened intently to your delivery. And I don't need to say anymore. I concur wholeheartedly with the way you spoke this morning. And when I called you about telling you that I would vote for you, I meant that. And so I'm glad that you are where you are. And we hope, Mr. Speaker, me and you and the others who have similar terms, we hope, we hope for the best. My Christmas theme for my seniors' party this year is giving thanks. My Christmas theme for my seniors' party this year is giving thanks, having hope. A few days ago, I think it was, I celebrated thirty-nine years of being elected. And as I walked through the door this morning, talking to some of your colleagues, we had to say, when you come in here, you think you can get the world done and you promised the world to get things done. And then you find out that the world is about to stop you from getting what they ask you to do. So, Mr. Speaker, we will never do everything that we had hoped, prayed, and sweated and was threatened to get done. Never, I don't think. We will leave here and we will look back and say, well, we didn't get that done, we didn't get that done. But a true son of the soil, we can say we tried and we did. Sometimes our best and sometimes not our best. Because sometimes we, you get discouraged and you say, but why in the world they can't see it this way? And you know it's right, you know it's right, but you got those who are adamant. Put it back, put you back. And so that's where I'm at right now with this bill. I have been against the thought processes of beneficial ownership from the day it was came here. And so I rise today with hope for the future because having considered the legislation, I realize that the fears that I harbored these many years for the long-term success of the Cayman Islands and supported as it is to the greatest extent by our financial services industry were well placed from the outset, twenty-ten, twenty-eleven. When I was at the JMC as the premier and Minister of Finance, and I was called in to the Treasury and asked if I would introduce such a bill. And I said, what bill? They began to explain it. And I said, do you have it? They said, no. I said, well, you go get it. You get it, you put it in place, tell me how it works against London. And then we will look at how Cayman can do its best to look good. Now, I know that my colleagues not going to like some of what I'm saying, but I have to say it because these are facts. And before I move further, I want to thank all those who have worked, in particular though, the minister, who have done a great work to make the whole thing palatable somehow. Not that he satisfied me with the path because, or the bill, because as I said, I am against beneficial ownership and I'm going to take the time to explain why. I do want to thank the Attorney General because he too have been working hard over the years with FATF and C, FATF or CTFA, something like that. There are so many abbreviations now that you lose track. But I want to thank them and I don't want them to think that what I am saying, and I've said this to my minister, look, I don't think it's clear cut, as they say, because who can you trust? They have moved the gold post more than that little one we had down on the road car we never had in the field, Mr. Speaker. So we set up two cream pans and when we thought that the next side was going, when we moved it back and when it was far enough, we moved it forward. That's what when we were growing up, you can't trust these people. My suspicions about the bad faith of the European Union and certain bad actors in the United Kingdom from early in my administration then are now proved correct beyond doubt. And I think, looking at the bill, that I was right after all, right that the powers of the European Union would become jealous of our phenomenal financial success and right that we could not trust some of the bureaucrats in London. Nor may I add, Mr. Speaker, is that surprising even after Brexit. And it is clear that the British government, who have pushed for this bill, and I'm glad the minister has not followed them with all that he wanted. It remain very much under the control of some of those people, civil servants in London, who have the interest of the European Union closer to their hearts, it seems, than they do the success of their own United Kingdom and us, its overseas territories. Not many in this new Cayman, not many, Mr. Speaker, came from where you come from and those older than me and you, not many in this new Cayman that we have were here for the foundation of our financial services industry. And it may be that few, no insult to members, but few members here today understand totally the foundations that are under laid. These foundations are being viciously still and inappropriately attacked, as far as I'm concerned, by a now not so slow drip of hostility, smiling in your face and negativity behind your back. Here, as I said, I do give thanks to my two colleagues for their untiring work to get us, and I say get us for now, off the grey list. And along with that, I must add, not just my minister, but the AG again, for his work to help safeguard the minister and ensure that all things are properly done in law. Yes. We still find ourselves vulnerable to two threats, not only the threat of what I think is unnecessary bureaucratic regime as they would want with regard to public access to beneficial ownership, but the threat from within our islands, albeit promoted by the same European sources. These sources encourage our very own in the theme of accommodation of reputation and compliance to throttle the very life of our financial services industry by layer upon layer of ill, this kind of regulation and enforcement, which not only hitting businesses, look at what it does to us as locals. And yet we have not been able to say to them, you know, you really have to change some of this. Look at what you're doing, our people can't get an account unless you tell them when you go to the bathroom and when you come out. And then you got to put it on paper too, what you done in the bathroom. There starts, Mr. Speaker, to prove it. And it will not surprise anyone in this house to hear me say so. These are some of the very same points I made some many years ago, which I was taking a beating for to get twenty-six agreements, had to travel from one point, one country to the next to get twenty-six, to satisfy twenty-six agreements, to get us off the blacklist or whatever list we were on at that time. I see somebody quoting, still quoting how much I spent in travel. They're still doing that. They try to make me look bad. But guess what? In my own defense, when I was minister, I had everything that the present minister had, plus finance, plus premier, plus plus, because we only had five members. So I had all of that tourism, I had the travel. I said then, and I'm glad that those that beat up on me too, realize it, when they took power, that Cayman has to defend itself, Cayman has to be at the table. And it costs. And as we build and become more developing small state as we are, it going to cost, cost. So let them continue to talk their rot about who's spending what money. I made some of these points I'm talking about many years ago and it resulted, and I think, in my removal from office and the fall of my administration and the constant attack on me because I do not allow them to grin in my face and to override my belief and the evidence to go with it. Hasn't failed. I have taken those positions because they are right. And a true son of the soil, one who now went to no college, but I could read good and I could understand. And God gave me that, gave me that and still have up until last week, choose you right there, that inevitability to see wrong and to understand wrong and say, it stops here. He gave me that. And so I hope nobody takes wrong what I say. I have taken these positions because they are right and correct and what is or was being proposed, the opposite. I have taken them because my role as a true born son of this soil and as a legislator is to protect the Cayman Islands people and to do that to protect the Cayman Islands' financial services industry for the benefit of our sons and daughters and future generations. There are those in London and Brussels who would have us as no more than seafarers, obedient and without the benefits of the success of our financial services industry. They told us that. You stick to tourism and leave finance to London. And I say, you're not talking to this McKeever Bush, because they had already told Roy Borden and Gilbert McLean the same thing. But I say, you're not talking to this McKeever Bush. We are better positioned than you all. You all have sold yourselves out and we're not going to do that, but we can do the right things so that we can benefit our people. And I refuse them, took them to the International Court in Europe because of their position and we won and we got benefits for it. That's how our stock exchange got noticed. That was one of the things, we know we had to give up, but we got something for it. So they don't understand that we are fighters, that we have the wherewithal in our country to do and keep the industry the way it should be, to keep people trusting us and to keep international capital flows coming here. And we will continue to do that. And I want to say this, our budget this year, supported in large part directly and indirectly by our financial services industry, produces over one billion a year of revenue for thirty-five thousand Caymanian people and of course for them that live here otherwise. And so our Caymanian people as a result have still have, much as we have it hard now, we still have one of the highest standards of living in the world. And we achieve it with the help of the financial services industry despite interference from OECD and Brussels. Look at the United Kingdom, sir. The United Kingdom is a debtor nation and so is every member of the European Union. By comparison, the financial position of the Cayman Islands has been stable and secure, not without its twists and turns, but stable, stable. And what I think we are seeking to do with this legislation, we don't want that position to fall. And my worry is, I said, the changing of the gold post. We don't have any central bank in the Cayman Islands like the Bank of England or the European Central Bank to bail us out by the printing of money, which does not exist, nor can we enable, Mr. Speaker, quantitative easing by whatever means. There will be, I say, no international consortium racing to lend us money if our revenues on the financial services industry are lessened and the unnecessary bureaucracy, which I also refer, because I'm not easily convinced. Look at our brethren in Bermuda with a national debt of over two-point-five billion and an annual deficit of two-hundred-and-fifty million every year spiraling downwards to the point where they believe that the introduction of taxation on an entirely mobile financial services industry will serve as somehow a golden parachute. The introduction of taxation to our mobile and intangible financial services has been shown to be devastating. It should serve as an example to us from nineteen sixty-two, when the introduction of an excise tax in New York caused an overnight migration of the euro bond market from New York to London with such devastating results to the New York financial services. I am glad that, being a wise man, the minister was not, and his advice was not so convinced and has rejected that idea of some global taxation. I see I'm being taped. I hope I'm being taped for the right reasons and the plaidens on the school and not on a political platform, but I don't mind, I'm talking the truth, so tape me. I understand as well as any member here, the deep-seated rivalries that seem to divide this house on some of these issues, but I hope that we all, and I, before I sit down because I want this house to finish quick today being Thanksgiving, but I want to have my say on this and I'm hoping, Mr. Speaker, that I'm still relevant to the bill, but I think I am. And so we are, we have our divisions, but I have my knowledge too. And not because I don't have a certificate, except honorary ones, that I don't understand. So it's a pity that the former premier is not here, the former minister who it brought in in twenty thirteen or wherever it was, the beneficial ownership and told me that I was fool, fool. That's what he said. I was fool, fool. It's a pity and I looked him in his face right now and tell him, I'm not fool, fool. I'm not as fool, fool as these old clothes make me look, as Anjuli used to say. You understand that now though. I understand as well as any member here, how these rivalries divide us. And it should rise above the petty politics. And it should rise above the petty politics. It is an issue of vital importance to the people of the Cayman Islands and our sons and daughters and their sons and daughters. It is an issue that transcends political divide and I say, listen very careful to this analysis that some may frown on. Then, when you hear it, each of you put your hands on your hearts and answer the question. Can any Caymanian in their right mind and being of good faith and good conscience with the interest of the Cayman Islands and its people at heart, say that I'm wrong? You say, well, you're off the gray list. Yes, well, if you think I'm wrong, at the least, there will be an indisputable record available for future generations. And what I said in 2011 in London is either we thought foolish by the foolish or be a true and telling factor as to what has happened since I said no back then and when the former member from New Orleans put it in place. I'm not prevailing on this honorable House to vote against this legislation. That's not what I'm saying. I promised the minister that I would give him a fair hearing. He knew that on the very first day they came to caucus that I was there. But I'd say then that I was not supporter of the idea of beneficial ownership. And I want to set those out as clearly as I can. So let's set this context. We know this legislation was generated in the United Kingdom in the name of what I will call anti-money laundering. And now our client compliance, which I will refer to as AML and KYC. The legislation has been driven since 1989 by a European Union body, the Financial Action Task Force, or FATF, itself a Paris-based subsidy of the Organization for Economic Cooperation and Development. Which I need hardly add is anything but and which has blacklisted us for no good reason in the past except for their jealousy and which I will call the OECD. The concern expressed in the first OECD visit here in the nineties, Mr. Speaker, you might remember some of this, was with regards to the proceeds of financial crimes extended subsequently to terrorist financing. And since 1989, the financial services industrial, and ours to the great, greatest extent, has been suffocated by layer after layer of costly and holy, sometimes I think, unneeded legislation. There are numerous studies that all of us should make ourselves available or make, make it available to us. There are numerous studies focused on the lack of any effectiveness of AML and KYC regulation. It is currently estimated, Mr. Speaker, that these two policies, AML and KYC, enable law enforcement authorities globally to recover exactly 0.05% of the over $2 trillion of criminal funds. This is in circulation annually. To save you doing the calculation, that means that 99.95% of global crime and terrorist financial proceeds are not prevented or confiscated by the AML and KYC legislation. A major European study, also entitled "From Illegal Markets to Legitimate Businesses: The Portfolio of Organized Crime in Europe", estimates that criminal revenues from drug sales alone in Europe generates at least $110 billion, yes, US dollars, every year. Europol reports that with the benefit of all the AML and KYC legislation, European authorities confiscate only €2 billion of illicit funds every year. That is to say, the success rate of anti-money laundering efforts by these statistics too is only something like 1.1%. And so a more optimistic figure than 0.05%, but completely and utterly, as far as I'm concerned, ineffective. But if you were to include other illegal activities such as kidnapping, human trafficking, extortion, illegal gambling and fraud, the rate of illegal money actually confiscated by all these rules and regulations and peoples they put in place and pressure us with drops well below 1%. But actually, these real figures, which we rarely ever see publicized, are much worse than that. Because research in New Zealand also shows that conventional policing, without the benefit of AML and KYC legislation, is responsible for 80% of confiscations of illicit monies and that only 20% of confiscations come from the application of AML and KYC procedures, the things that are killing us here. If this ratio were applicable to the rest of the world's procedures, well, that's dividing numbers. I said by five, which gives a success rate of 0.01% of seized criminal financial assets on a best-case basis of 0.22%. And what I think is ridiculous about these numbers is not just that they are ridiculous, what is even more ridiculous is that they are never quoted. You never hear that. Well, here you go, put this in place and you're gonna keep them people down here busy and you're gonna send down 30 more people to put in some office down here so that our little money, which should go to social services and everywhere else, has to be paying staff because of all these things that never happened. Not effective. And not only that, nor is there ever quoted the cost-benefits, as I'm saying, analysis. The field of anti-money laundering is characterized by a persistent failure of what works and why. Because none of it works. That's the problem. The perceived, Mr. Speaker, inability of banks and regulators to implement the layer upon layer of ridiculous, I think, AML and KYC regulations correctly or fully is blamed for these ridiculous low forfeiture numbers despite evidence to the contrary, which identifies corrupt bankers in the pay of organized crime over the world as the primary cause. And so emphasis has now shifted with the assistance of the accounting profession in conjunction with our regulators to the goal of being able to show complete adherence to the full range of AML and KYC regulation and compliance to avoid substantial fines and reputational damage without ever inquiring as to whether any of it is of any real and meaningful effort and effect. But we see from the statistics that it clearly isn't, as far as I am concerned, far as what I'm told, far as what I'm reading. So the FATF have created an irrelevant and expensive industry that is of no use whatsoever, far as I'm concerned. But the question today is, do we let it harm us further than it has already? Yes, there is a good reason why no cost-benefit analysis of this ridiculous state of affairs is ever undertaken. In 2009, Mr. Speaker, the estimated cost of compliance with AML and KYC regulation in just four European countries, France, Germany, Italy and the Netherlands amounted to 81.4 billion US dollars. But those four countries account for only 54.2% of the European Union GDP. So it's, that's a simple extrapolation suggests that the complaint costs in the European Union alone amounted to US $156 billion. And let me remind us again. Europol estimates that European authorities only confiscate 1.2 billion euros of illicit funds each year. And so we can conclude that the direct costs of implementing these policies in Europe are more than 100 times higher than their benefits. They have their own agenda. The same study looked at other countries around the world, amounting for AML and KYC of 304 billion, while the authorities managed to seize around 3 billion a year in criminal funds worldwide. And you can tell me it is effective and Cayman gotta do it and Cayman gotta get beat up. And if Cayman don't do it, then we are doing the wrong thing. And if McKeever stand up here debating, he's doing the wrong thing. Oh yeah? Then we have costs of the 80 or so international bodies, thousands of government agencies and regulators, all chasing their tails in this matter. The cost to banks of this system is truly astronomical. One bank alone reckons 100 million a year in compliance costs. Then there is a very real concern through the mechanism of derisking and the withdrawal of banking services, because that's what we're all worried about. That, that again threatens our financial services industry. And what do it continues to cost us. But yes, government is right, to ignore these rules is impossible. The penalties for non-compliance with AML and KYC regulation amount to 4 billion in 2018, 8.1 billion in 2019 and 10.4 billion in 2020. But again, let me remind honorable members, the authorities recover only 3 billion a year worldwide from the criminals. Secondly, when the FATF came to the Cayman Islands in the nineties and suggested the introduction of what I called it in a Trojan horse and other people picked it up and say that you were so correct, they said that criminal funds in circulation exceeded 2 trillion per year. And we are told today that criminal funds in circulation still exceed 2 trillion per year. So let me ask this question. If AML and KYC regulations are so effective as crime really fall in since they were introduced? You might say, well, old boy, it could be worse if it wasn't introduced. Maybe. I don't know. I'm sure that the promoters would say that. The United Nations have some interesting statistics, Mr. Speaker, on the point. In 2001, 185 million people aged 16 to 54, that is to say 4.7% of the population concerned, had used drugs. In 2020, that number had increased to 284 million of 5.6% of the population concerned. And in 2030, that report suggests an increase of 11 is projected, 11%, which would mean that more than 319 million people will have used drugs in the prior 12 months. So the stats in the study show that the number of deaths linked to illegal drug use has similarly increased. Anyone with two greens of common sense to rub together can see that drug dealers continue to sell drugs because they always manage to launder and use the money they earn illegally. The current AML and KYC legislation is ineffective in stopping that kind of drug crime. What it's doing is stopping us. That's what they're doing, giving us headaches. And there is no appetite to tighten it up or slacken it up, whichever, so that local people like ourselves don't have to worry. You get an account, just you have to do what is necessary, of course. But look at all we have to do. Yet to go to Miami. And you walk into the bank and start an account immediately. Thirdly, there's a further, I think, dark side to the AMC or AML and KYC regulations. Article 11 of the United Nations Declaration of Human Rights, and I'm going to return to this point later, in the context of our own constitution later, states that everyone charged with a penal offense has a right to be presumed innocent until proven guilty according to law in a public trial, at which he has had all guarantees necessary for his defense. I do need to remind anyone that this is a vitally important feature of our Cayman Islands and all civilized society in that it places a burden of proof under prosecution. It prevents the abuse of power by the authorities. It provides confidence in the judicial system by requiring solid evidence to convict. And it minimizes miscarriages of justice. Yes. Many of you could see the point. The problem is that the AML and KYC procedures do exactly the opposite of these fundamental constitutional points. Mr. Speaker, points which you have put into the constitution, ours constitution. They consider you those regimes, consider you guilty until proven innocent. If the banks or a lawyer finds one of your transactions suspicious, it is up to you to prove that it is legitimate. You are obliged to give all your documents, including your most personal ones, to the banks that request them to prove you are not a criminal instead of the banks authorities having to prove that you are a criminal. Things have become so mad and detached from reality that the authorities may freeze your assets as a precaution without you ever needing to have been found guilty of anything. And AML and KYC procedures can lead to profiling and discrimination where individuals or groups are considered to be of a greater risk of illegal activity because of their nationality, ethnic origin or social economic status. And in Cayman, is which side of the street you come from, Bobo? We farm the toe, Bobo. Whose friend you are, Bobo. AMLC and KYC have led to an explosion in this touring and identifying of data which can be a target for hackers or worse if what is being asked of us is to make the records of your financial services industry available to the public. And that's where I stood against it. B Companies, JP Morgan and others have had the financial information of hundreds and millions of clients hacked. So by wanting to reduce the number of crimes, we are opening, far as I'm concerned, a Pandora's box which allows many more crimes to be permitted. So we expect no understanding on these fundamental points from some those in the United Kingdom. We know who they are. They stand up there day after day and talk about us. They don't know us, but they talk about us, talk about our regimes here, get up in the commons, earn the lords and carry on about us. You know them, Mr. Eji. You know them. As Olu said, it is difficult to get a man to understand something when his salary depends on his not understanding it. I have gone into this because I have had years to undergo some of the berating, as I was called fool fool by the member absent. And who introduced this in law here? But I studied it. I listened. I don't agree with everything that I've heard. I'm giving people the benefit of the doubt, knowing that they work hard. But these legislative and regulatory processes that are affecting us and causing our institution, millions of dollars, needs to be looked at. That's what we need to do. And I don't think that this legislation is doing that. But we need to do that. Because this little island is overridden with bureaucracy. More and more and more and more. Pour it on them. That's what they're doing us. While we said we don't want to do this or that because it might look like playing politics, it is some same thoughts that laid us down these different paths to accept wholeheartedly. And I was here, I was here when some of this was going on. And I had to listen by these, by the power players. They did what they want. I, I'm wondering though, Mr. Speaker, I know and I heard and I know some of it, what the minister say, the various discussions he has held. But then, our verse is true. But then, our worst is true. People come to us as legislators and said, boy, you know, we respect this and we respect that, but we don't believe everything we hear, and so is there anything you all can do? So are they playing, what they're playing, what game they're playing, except to protect their interests? Their interests, I would think, is the Cayman Islands' financial services' best interest. And then does anyone in this honorable house really suppose that our client base will put up with public disclosure of their most intimate financial arrangements when we are the only jurisdiction in the world, and certainly the only jurisdiction with the financial services industry managing somewhere between six to eight trillion dollars a year on which is being forced? Our industry, I think dwarfs the alternative investment funds industry in the combined jurisdictions of Dublin and Luxembourg, but no similar legislation is being forced on them, or is it? Is it? No, I don't think so. I haven't read it. But sophisticated private equity vehicles and funds and high net worth clients require a jurisdiction that values above all the legitimate right to privacy and protects their information and structuring from competitors, the public, at large journalists, and we're not gonna mess with them here, but protects us from them too and other people in terms. Now, let me say this. The fourth, and I think most central point, Mr. Speaker, to what I'm trying to say, that is, this proposed legislation, which is now before us, I think, I hope not, from what I read, maybe they can clear this up, contradicts the agreement between the Cayman Islands and the Cayman Islands government in terms of the undertaking signed by CIG. That undertaking provided that the Cayman Islands would only consider introducing public access to its beneficial ownership records when, one, such public access became the global standard, it's not, and, two, such public access was effective in every European Union jurisdiction. So I hope that is so now. I hope that's what we are doing. That should be the end of the discussion, far as I'm concerned, for two reasons. The first is that the European Court of Justice, or the ECG, has been, yes, recently, by decisive ruling, struck down access across all the whole of the European Union member countries to public access to our beneficial ownership register as constituting, quoting, "a serious interference of the fundamental rights of respect for private life and the protection of personal data," end of quote. Yeah? That's why I can laugh at that one that's not here today, because I knew that that, I felt it, it was not gonna happen. Once those people, if they got hold to what was about to happen to them, they were gonna put their foot down, and that's what they done. It took a long time, but I'm proven right. I'm not as fool, fool, like what they want make people believe. And those protections come from Article seven and eight of the European Charter of Fundamental Rights and are now upheld by the European Court of Justice. But this decision, Mr. Speaker, is critical in the analysis for us in the Cayman Islands because those rights mirror not only current United Kingdom laws in Article eight of the Human Rights Act nineteen ninety-eight, but more importantly, the precise words of the Cayman Islands Constitution, Mr. Speaker, which you helped put there, nine, section nine, three of our Bill of Rights. This fourth point is of itself vital, fatal, fatal to the introduction of any legislation in the Cayman Islands which seeks to grant public access to our beneficial ownership register because in the Cayman Islands, it would be unconstitutional to do so, and the European Court of Justice has in Europe, as I said, made that very point. In addition to the rules in the United States, creating central beneficial ownership register pursuant to the Corporate Transparency Act twenty twenty-one, under auspices of FinCEN with effect first of January twenty twenty-four, dictate that FinCEN is not permitted to open a beneficial ownership register to public access. Uh-huh, by the United States. So public access to our beneficial ownership register is not the standard in the United Kingdom, as they were saying, but you told me they didn't have it back then. It is not the standard in Europe. It is not the standard in the United States, and it is most certainly not the standard in China or Southeast Asia. I should perhaps add for the record that panic to those UK politicians should be in the United Kingdom too. By the appalling extent of money laundered, proceeds which are invested in the United Kingdom, real estate, the United Kingdom has recently introduced a register of overseas entities pursuant to the Economic Crime Transparency and Enforcement Act twenty twenty-two, in which twenty-five percent owner, and note here the number of a foreign company owning UK real estate must be disclosed, but only in relation to a foreign ownership of UK real estate. Uh-huh. But this is, I think, quite different situation, and this quite rightly reveals the ownership of monies actually invested in the United Kingdom in real estate as it should. Even the latest UK legislation, the Economic Crime and Corporate Transparency Bill twenty twenty-three, only now requires entity or identity verification for new and existing registered company directors and persons with significant control. There are four million companies registered in the United Kingdom, and it would take many years to obtain the same standard of excellence that we have achieved here in the Cayman Islands, and that's rubby them. And there is no mention here of public access in the United Kingdom's Companies House. My fifth and last point is this, Mr. Speaker. Anyone in the United Kingdom Legislative Civil Service, and particularly me, Margaret Hodge, and Mr. Andrew Mitchell MP, who believe that public access to beneficial ownership registers will improve the current Cayman Island system, has a hopelessly flawed understanding of our system. We can understand how important it must be to them to be advocating a global leading standard and how important it may take, make them sound in the United Kingdom against a domestic manifesto of any meaningful or relevant economic proposal where hundreds of billions of dollars' worth of proceeds of crime are being laundered throughout the United Kingdom properties by way of real estate transactions. They've got a nerve to come down here and tell us about our democracy and what we must do. Yes, they still think that we are monkeys swinging on trees, but we don't know anything. But the suggestion, though, that the United Kingdom's system of public access to beneficial ownership is in any way similar or relevant to the Cayman Island system is not simply unsound, but very, very un laughably, if we could, unsound. And I need hardly remind members of this House that the Cayman Island system of beneficial ownership transparency already requires licensed, regulated, and inspected service providers to verify the beneficial ownership of every ten percent holder of not simply landholding companies in the Cayman Islands, but of every entity registered in the Cayman Islands with indisputable documentary evidence, which is immediately available on inquiry to the proper authorities within an hour. They can get it here. That is to say, and forgive me if I labor this point, that the law enforcement, the IRS, the HMRC, and every other tax authority has immediately available verified information on the beneficial owners of Cayman Islands vehicles on request. In comparison with that world-leading system, which we already demonstrate, the system in the United Kingdom is an unlicensed wild west show. Companies, houses in the United Kingdom has only twenty-five employees, who has only now empowered by the now UK legislation to seek KYC information. So as matters stand, Mr. Speaker, the Cayman Island system demonstrates the world-leading standard. I think that's the leader of the opposition admitted that a while ago, but he should know, mightn't agree with me all the time, but you know what I'm saying is true. As matters stand, the Cayman Island system demonstrates throughout the world leading a leading standard, and not only that, and in the face of this blatant incompetence, the UK would want us to go further? Imagine? It is unnecessary to do so, and I think the minister has said that is, that's not where we're going. We have complete transparency, and yet we have no statistically relevant conviction in relation to tax evasions or money laundering, which is the clearest conceivable evidence of two things. Firstly, the system that we have is absolutely effective without reservation, and secondly, we do not need to go further by opening the beneficial ownership register to the public. It is not just me who say our system is world-leading, even Cyrus Wans, who said that some time ago, the Cayman Islands is better positioned to fight terrorism than the United States, as that country, he said, actually collects beneficial ownership information. What problem exactly the United Kingdom, UK, trying to solve? Which one? No statistical and relevant evidence of money laundering being taken or undertaken here in the Cayman Islands for years, for years. And when you do this sort of thing, members, you open this up. Let me give you some last facts here. Between six thousand to ten thousand kidnappings in Central and Latin America alone annually, and this breed of criminality preys on private information of the sort they are now proposing to make available to the world at large pursuant to what they would want. You should not think for a moment that our clients need toe or will put up with it. The damage already undertaken to our private client trust industry, I think, is considerable from what I'm hearing, and I don't know whether the government bodies that deal with it is hearing it, because the people that might sit with them and then come tell us, whether that's a different story, it is talking, or they took both corners of their mouth, I don't know, but they're saying so. So just for the trap, trap of public access introduced, as it was some years ago, and widely publicized to Central and South American clients, who were formerly users of the Cayman Islands, now structure their trust and foundations in South Dakota and Wyoming and other US state jurisdictions where complete confidentiality is assured. The sort of beneficial ownership register that is being suggested to be trawled over meaninglessly, not simply by hack journalists of The Guardian, by meaningfully extortionists, kidnappers, identitatives, human traders, and worse, if we as legislators are not prepared to do something about it. Our arguments, meaningless, not for me. Last thing is this. UK can't come down unless as much as they think. While they have those laws that through the constitution, they can't. That would be renegade on international practice. If they seek to enforce any such legislation against the will of this House, it will not do so from, I think, the fiercest of opposition and the highest of courts, none of which will benefit our financial services industry. So our Cayman Islands Constitution guarantees legitimate privacy, the rule of law and the presumption of innocence, this, all of that. So this AML and KYC law and regulation flies in the face of that by seeking to reverse the burden of proof. The proposed legislation breaches, I think, the Cayman Islands constitutional right to privacy, if that's what they're trying to do. So, Mr. Speaker, I've gone through quite a bit, maybe bored some members, I wanted in the record for posterity. And I took more time than I promised the minister and promised my premier, but I told them I could not allow this bill to be come through here, and I not have my say. If all of this is already taken into consideration, hip, hip, hooray. What I know is not taken into consideration is how much we have to suffer through AML and KYC because of the regimes here and our frightened-to-death attitude that banks can pick up and go somewhere else. So we say, you've got to do what they say, we can't do nothing with legislation, we can't do this, we can't do that. Let them, let them create the interest rates, let them take our houses, let them ride us like donkeys, and we can't do nothing. Oh, yeah? I don't believe that. I don't. I don't. But mind you, those institutions are having to find millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars, not just the banks, but law firms and other business houses for compliance sake. And so, let us say this. Let us dig deep in our hearts, we've got to vote for this, but let's come back, let us strategy to clean some of this up, determine that we can do so, because we have constitutional right, we have legal rights to the European Union Court, we can still go there, even though Brexit, we can still go there, we can apply there. I do give thanks again, Mr. Speaker, and I thank you for your indulgence for hearing such a long speech in your very first few hours of sitting as our new speaker, but you were up to it, you used to like it, so you've got to be up to it now, Mr. Speaker. But let me thank the AG and my colleague, the minister, for their hard work, for trying to find the right balance here, and I'm no way encouraged seeing what they have done to us over the years. When I say them, I mean them across the pond, and how they have shifted the goalposts so often after we work hard to please them and they operate regimes for worse than ours. When are we so afraid to say that? Why? Tell them their sins. I remember when they put that, don't ask, but you can't build this, you can't build that, and build the next thing. I put a clause in there. If the United Kingdom gives us, the Cayman Islands, the wrong information and is a huge fallout on our revenue, they pay. Oh, man. That's one of the reasons why they've set the lease of my house. You're not getting away with this, you know what they told me? Little rock like you and a little minister like you think you can come here and tell us that? That was Simmons that told me that. If I write my book. I'm not forgetting, Mr. Speaker, that it was the former premier, the one we just moved, and the minister then, who is now relegated to the back bench and wouldn't come today, who made fun of me when I stood up against it in London and when he brought the beneficial ownership to this honorable House, promising that he knew what he was doing and I didn't. But that's much worse than his promise to you all on the Environmental Council bill. You know, you see how, what that has done on the promise that he made, it wasn't going to affect. It is, though. One department suing another. As I said, I am not as fool, fool, as my old clothes make me look. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, member, Westby West, for your very fulsome contribution. Before I ask if there is anyone else who wishes to speak, I would like to do what I should have done earlier, which is to recognize former members of this honorable House who have stayed not only through the election of Speaker process, but to listen to the contributions on this important bill. The honorable former, honorable former Chief Secretary, Mr. James Ryan, and the Honorable Minister for Education at one point in financial services. Subsequently, Mr. Tara Rivers, Mrs. Lucille Seymour, who was a member of the government of which I was a part back in two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, and Mrs. Daphne Ory, who was here. I think the only one who was here during her time would have been the member from Westby West. Yes, and former minister, Mr. Gilbert McLean, who was here earlier. So for those of you who are still here, I would like to invite So for those of you who are still here, I would like to invite you on the part of the parliament to luncheon with us when we take the break. It's America's Thanksgiving Day, but no reason for us not to give thanks as well. Would any other member wish to speak? Would any other member wish to speak? Would any other member wish to speak? If not, we call on the honorable minister, deputy premier, to exercise a right of reply.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And thank you all for all the contributions by members thus far. I made a note of the points I think I should address from the contributions, starting with the leader of the opposition, Mr. Speaker. I think your point, which I think requires clarification, is the implementation time period, which I think is important to set out the listening public and particularly to industry, Mr. Speaker. It was and come to fruition to present and debate this bill for the end of the year so that the principal legislation is on the statute book. We know full well, as the leader of the opposition has said, that this will not be developed and implemented in haste. There are underlying regulations to ensure are fully prepared and consulted upon. There will also need to be guidance notes, there are guidance notes now, but they will have to be rewritten to come into compliance and conformance with the new principal act sort of be passed today and also with the regulations. So we don't envision rushing this whatsoever, which is the point of starting early before the FATF evaluation in 2025, to provide sufficient lead time of at least a year to get this system streamlined and in place and not in a rush. So that the word that I used earlier and the word that the leader of opposition used earlier, that we are not on the back foot, but we now transition to being on the front foot and not having to rush in the end of 2025 for an assessment in 2026. The member for Botten Town West, Mr. Speaker, raised the question of the schedule at the back and the distinction between that schedule and the schedule that's at the end of the Tax Information Authority Act, which sets out numerous countries that are signed up to the common reporting standard. They're two different regimes, Mr. Speaker. The schedule at the back of this bill is to reflect the agreement between, that I referred to in my presentation of the bill, the agreement between the Cayman Islands and the UK exchange of notes in which information would be shared to law enforcement authorities on a private basis, which is what the member of West Bay West was referring to in at least a 24-hour turnaround time, that that now has a legislative footing, schedule of the bill. The Tax Information Bill, the Tax Information Authority Act, sets out the common reporting standard in those partners that share tax information, which is a different regime, where the two should not be conflated. Now, coming to the member of West Bay West, who among other things detracted from the space I wanted to get through the bills today to get everyone home for Thanksgiving supper. But as the member quite rightly said, the member must have his say and the member has a history with these matters that should be respected. I would have only have been a law school student at the time the member would have been on the international stage grappling with these issues with the policymakers at the time and would have been reading about it during my breaks between classes. But I put into buckets what I believe was the thrust of the contribution in three buckets. The aims and objectives of standard setters in one bucket. The, what I, what I think the term we call now is the effect of international regulations on the local populace and what the term is called financial inclusion, to be sure that they're not impacting the average person in society when they're really aimed at international transactions. And then the third bucket is whether or not to clarify the aim of the bill to not have full public access. I'll start in reverse order because the first one is the quickest one to dispense with. As I said in the presentation of the bill, the bill is not calling for general public accessible registers for the reasons I said in the presentation of the bill, because we have advice and analysis that is not constitutionally sound. And we have had, Mr. Speaker, extensive dialogue with the UK to make that position perfectly In terms of the aims and objectives of international standard setters, Mr. Speaker, we'll have to take the member, of course, what he says was his experience. But I too can speak about my experience. What I have found is that there are indeed policymakers from around the world, Mr. Speaker, who seek to implement initiatives because international financial centers, they perceive some of us to be something that we are not. Now, that's not to say some of the ills that they are concerned about may not go, may go on in other places. That quite possibly is the case. But what we can confirm is that to the largest extent possible, that is not who the Cayman Islands is and what we represent. Our transactions and clients are some of the largest financial institutions in the world. The complexity, the pedigree of the transactions is astonishing. It's why the member for West Bay West could quote some of the statistics that he has. However, in my experience as minister, from now having to travel and face policymakers along with the honorable attorney general, other colleagues, and technical staff, it is recognized just how large and sophisticated the Cayman Islands International Financial Services business is. Their point now sounds slightly different than the history that the member for West Bay West set out. Their point now is that since you have this large staple in the financial, in the international financial system, you now bear responsibility in that system to ensure that your side of the fence is strong and doesn't break down because if it does, there's so much coming through you, it could spell a detrimental effect to others in the global system. So to whom much is given, much is owed by that entity. And in this case, that's the Cayman Islands. We have to ensure that our defenses are strong because we are part of a global system. In terms of the difference in visitors, I again was not there in terms of the visiting team that the member of West Bay West spoke of 20 years ago. But I was witness to the visiting team of the FATF that came three months ago. And I think without breaching the confidentiality of FATF proceedings, Mr. Speaker, it was obvious to all of us who greeted them that they were pleasantly surprised and amazed at the sophistication of this little country of ours. Some of them who had never, ever been to the Cayman Islands did not expect to see a regulator with such infrastructure and facilities, a regulator with such experts, many of which who are Caymanians, leaders in their fields, did not expect to see a set of cabinet members who could speak to the issues, did not expect to see a private sector who they had two interviews with to the exclusion of the government. So the attorney general and I weren't in the room and had two separate, and we know, AG, I maybe probably say this much, that they made sure that the second group got a different set of questions than the first group and still were surprised at the level of sophistication and knowledge and the compliance culture. So I think it's fair to say they left here that if they had any Netflix caricature of us, it was dispelled. But that doesn't mean, Mr. Speaker, switching to the third point, that there isn't merit in ensuring that we have appropriate financial inclusion, that our seniors in particular, who are not familiar with the new international compliance landscape and some of which may not even have the documentation that's required under the rules to operate bank accounts, that we aren't, that we don't have a duty with regulators and financial institutions to ensure that where appropriate, there are simplified measures to carry out transactions, particularly when you know the source of income more than likely is the government. So yes, we do have to take a turn to ensure that we haven't gone overboard while keeping that international fence strong, that it is not overly burdensome to our folks here. In addition, Mr. Speaker, we also have to ensure that our financial institutions work in collaboration with government and agencies, that when guidance notes and regulations are redrafted, they are done so in a way that everybody, this is the point of taking the time, has at least a large or significant understanding of where the rules are going to go. Because sometimes what I see is that the agency knows what it means in the guidance notes with all the best intentions, but oftentimes it may not be applied that way in practice and causes a tension between the industry and the regulator. And we shouldn't be afraid that where that tension exists to try to clarify because everybody's on the same page. Nobody wants, as far as I know, bad business. But at the same time, you shouldn't, you should try to minimize the frustration on sound business. So I take those points on board. But none of that, in my view of what was said, should detract from the fact that this is a new vision for the Cayman Islands, to get ahead of standards, to not scramble at the last minute. The leader of the opposition said it best, that we have spent too many times knowing what is coming down the pipeline, knowing, and forget what anybody's asking us to do, sometimes you can read the initiative and know it is the right thing to do and still held out for the last second to appease certain interests, then turn around, end up on a list and run around, have to make the change anyhow. Makes no sense. We do the right thing that fits within our constitution and our laws because it is the right thing and show the world who we are. We're not going to demonstrate that to them by cowering in a corner complaining and then having been squeezed to do something. We are going to demonstrate exactly who we are as a people by getting ahead of things in our appropriate context so that the world can see that we are a globally respected financial services center of excellence. With that, Mr. Speaker, I conclude my right of reply.
Sir, Mr. Speaker, I had a point elucidation, but I wanted before the minister wrap up, I didn't want to interrupt his flow. I realize he was on a rhythm, but it never is too late to ask, to raise a point of elucidation. Thanks, Mr. Speaker, and thanks, Honorable Minister, for giving me. In reference to the point I was making in my contribution, it was dealt with part five of access to beneficial ownership information and it reads in the bill, reading section 22, the competent authority shall maintain a search platform by means of which the person specified in subsection two may be provided with access to information on all beneficial ownership registers maintained on behalf of legal persons subject to this act. And section two, 22, two goes on to read, for the purposes of subsection one, the competent authority may provide access to information on the search platform to A, the Royal Cayman Islands Police Service, B, the Financial Reporting Authority established on the section three of the proceeds of Crime Act 2020 revision. 22C reads the Cayman Islands Monetary Authority, the Anti-Corruption Commission, the Tax Information Authority, the Maritime Authority, the Civil Aviation Authority, the Reddy Sheriff Lands, and an entity and so forth. And the point I was trying to get, honorable members, is that if these entities already will have access to the beneficial ownership and then, which includes the Tax Information Authority, and we already have those other agreements with those different authorities as per set out in those laws, I mean, and the question is, I was trying to understand why we had a separate section for just the United Kingdom, we are the other, we are as a Tax Information Authority, as a list of over 30 something countries. So I was looking at clarification as why only the UK was listed when in fact, based on section 22, it appears that if these entities already have agreements and they'll be able to access the information and that's already there. So I was just trying to get clarification on that. So that was really what the point I was making in my contribution. Thanks for the allowance, Honorable Speaker.
Thank you, Member for Botten Town West. Honorable Minister, you wish to elucidate?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and thank you for the question, Member. As I mentioned earlier, but I'll try to cover it again. Under that section, this isn't just in relation to beneficial ownership information. So the information that the Tax Information Authority shares under its legislation is tax information of which beneficial ownership might be a subset of that data. So in order for them to be able to facilitate their obligations under the agreements you're talking about, they may need to access the beneficial ownership information to transfer the full package over. That's why that's there. The point about the only schedule, the only country in the schedule is because of the exchange of notes that was adopted in 2016 in which the Cayman Islands agreed to exchange beneficial ownership information with UK authorities under that agreement. And that is why it's the only country that's attached to the schedule of the bill because that's the only exchange of notes or exchange of beneficial ownership information agreement that we have with that country strictly for beneficial ownership, not tax information.
Thank you, Honorable Deputy Premier and Minister. The question is that a bill shortly entitled the Beneficial Ownership Transparency Bill 2023 be given a second reading. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The ayes have it. The bill is set down for second reading, or third reading. The House will now suspend for the luncheon adjournment. We will resume at 2:00 P.M.